Right. Thank you, everybody. This is for attending tonight. This is the March 22nd meeting of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission. Couple of quick operating rules while we get started. This is a web-based call and we're operating under the following procedures. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. A recording of the video will be available within 24 hours and will be posted to the Town of Waterford Planning and Development website. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they're speaking. If there's any attendee that creates an audio or visual disruption, the Zoom moderator may place them on mute or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We won't be using the chat feature in this meeting, but we do appreciate your attendance. And if you have any questions about the process, please call our staff. Eddie 604445813 between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday to Friday. And with that, we'll turn it over to Mark to take the role and then over to our chair to run the meeting.
Okay, for the roll call, Greg Nassid.
Here.
Karen Barnett.
Here.
Ken Petrini.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale. Joe DiBono. Okay, that's the role. We have three for a form.
Okay, great. Three members for the forum. Just a couple of announcements beforehand. The opt-out quest question or issue tonight, if anybody's here for that, that has been moved to the April 12th meeting. So you're more than welcome to stay, but if you're here for only that issue and you want to come back on the 12th, feel free to do that as well. Also, item number five, the draft of order of a housing plan. It's going to be very brief logistical issue tonight, just arranging the next meeting with Mr. Chandler, the consultant for the housing plan and the public hearing in May. So if you're here to discuss that issue, that is also going to be at a later date. So we don't have any alternates, right? We do have a quorum. So we can move to number two, approval of the March 8th, 2022 meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the March 8th meeting minutes?
Motion made by Karen. Second by.
Second.
And all favor? I.
I.
Really nothing approval in the minutes. Item number three, receipt of many applications?
We have none.
None. Okay. Number four, discussion of the opt-out of Public Act 2129 as mentioned. That is, that discussion is being moved to the April 12th, 2022 meeting. Item number five, we have a brief issue here of scheduling the next meeting, making sure that we have a forum. We'll only have three members to check with, see if we have a forum, but if all three of us are at least going to be there, then we have a forum for next Tuesday. And then a subsequent meeting, Abby and when, May or March?
Correct. What we're, what we're hoping to do is establish a forum for the 29th so that we can post a special meeting to continue the, so the commission can hear feedback from tonight's public meeting that was held at 5:30. And also to share any comments from the commission and I'll let Glenn get a little bit more into that meeting very, very briefly. And then before we move off of this topic, we'd like consensus and specific action for the commission to move forward for that, to set the, the public hearing for the affordable housing plan for May 10th.
Abby, but Karen and you and Ken here for next Tuesday's meeting?
Yes.
I'll be here.
Okay. So I'm sorry, Glenn, I called you, I think, Mr. Chandler. I'm sorry, I'm so.
That's okay.
Sorry about that. I tried to put in letters, people's names, but so we are all set for next Tuesday.
We are. And thank you very much. My intent, Mr. Chairman, for the meeting next week, I'm going to organize the comments that we heard here tonight. I think if the commission members have any additional thoughts you'd like to share with us that you'd like us to include and organize on this list, if you'd email those comments, I think to Abby in the next day or so. We'll get all this material together and share it back with you in advance of the meeting next week.
Okay, great. We had a nice meeting before this at 5:30. Did a great, great job in the presentation. Wish maybe we had some more public participation, but we had a little bit. So maybe next week we'll, we can even more so. Abby, so we have the advertising and the public hearing meeting?
Yep. So what will happen is if the commission takes action to vote now to, to set the public hearing for May 10th. What we want to make sure that we do is have a 35-day window in which that advertisement is, is posted. And so after the 29th, we'll be finalizing the plan with any comments from the commission, taking into account public comments. And, and moving that forward into its final form to post. The drop deadline that that has to publish is April 5th. We'd really like to aim closer to the April 1st end of things. And so Glenn and staff are prepared to really move quickly to incorporate any comments from tonight's session as well as what we hear on the 29th to make sure that the, the plan in its, in its final proposed form is, is ready to publish right away.
Okay. And so you're looking for the meeting to be May 10th?
Yes, we're looking for the, the public hearing to be set for May 10th, and that means we will advertise on or before April 5th.
Okay. Karen, Ken, do we, any issues with May 10th that we know of?
I, not yet. I, I don't know yet.
Okay.
Right, right now I'm fine. Yeah.
Ken, you're on.
It is a regular night for the commission, so it is.
Yeah. It, it should be fine.
It should be good, too.
Ken may be back by then. We also have Joe. We may have a new member by then as well. So I think the forum issues start to resolve themselves. We haven't had too much, any, too many issues, but I think they're going to resolve itself anyway. Okay. So we're all set with that issue in terms of what we need?
I believe so. Yep. We'll go ahead and set the date and, and get the advertising ready and, and continue to provide information to the commission to get that final draft out to advertise before the 5th.
Okay, great. Moving on to item number six.
You know, next week.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Mr. Attorney Brands, I think we got your additional information. I don't know if the commission has any questions. I think Mark and Abby has a quick presentation. If you have anything else to add, you know, feel free. So why don't we hear from Abby and Mark first or Attorney Brands? Which one?
Oh, I feel, I think Attorney Brands, you are on mute. We can't hear you.
It doesn't say you're on mute, but we can't hear you. Still can't hear you. But I think he said, go ahead, Abby.
I did. How about that? Is that working?
That's better.
That's working. Okay. Phew. All right. Just for the record, Mark Brands representing the applicant handles property Route 85 LLC. As the, as, as you've noted, we were here on March 8th. We received some comments from the commission. We have provided you with updated plans and that I believe address all of the outstanding issues. Mr. Overton is here. If you'd like to review the changes, I leave that to you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was told by your staff today that, that you're on a very tight schedule and you'd like us to be very brief. So I, I defer to you. We're happy to review some of the changes of the plans if you'd like, like us to present those.
We, we certainly don't want to cut you short if you have something, but I, you might want to hear if we have any questions.
All right. I would then I turn it over to Mr. Overton just to review the, the, the updates to the plans.
Hello, everyone. Darren Overton from SLR Consulting. So since the last meeting, there were a few comments that came up and we made some changes to the plans that were submitted. I'll just put up the updated rendering quickly. We did also update the color rendering to show the correct location of all the garages, walks, et cetera. So this is, what I'm showing on the screen is consistent with what was, what revised plans were submitted. We did an update of the parking comps on the cover sheet, which take advantage of the new regulation that was approved before or after this project was submitted. And we also put a note on there that the applicant is willing to accept that regulation as part of this project. We also added a slope detail showing the difference between whether, if there's rock encountered, whether a one to five rock slope would be utilized if, if we find rock in that initial cut slope coming in off of Hartford Turnpike versus the two to one or three to one slope that we show on the plans with the reverse bench slope. Also, the snow storage plan, we, we put a note on there that if the snow storage areas, the snow amount that's needed to be removed from the paved and walkway areas is exceeded, that'll be trucked off of the site. And we also took a look at as part of the updated parking computation, those spaces where we showed snow being stockpiled, that the excess parking that we show on the plan exceeds what's required. So those spaces could be utilized and still have a zoning compliant plan. And then the last thing, we did put a couple of signs. There's a sign, these white lines on here represent the walkways up to the disc golf course into the dog park. So we put a sign here next to the kind of the common parking area for the mailroom, et cetera, that notices that, and then also this location here between buildings one and two, that these are for residents only. The use of these amenities. So I believe that covers all of the issues that were brought up at the last meeting. And if anybody has any other questions or if there's anything I missed, I'm here to answer any questions, but that would conclude my, as far as revisions.
The only thing I would add is we also did provide you with details on the building height. That was one of the things you had requested. We've given you the average grade for each building and measurement for each, each individual building and all buildings comply.
Thank you for supplying that information in response to a concern of the commission member. Can we stop sharing the screen, please? Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions so far, Ken or Karen?
One. I noticed in the pages provided by Mark, they talked about the like crosswalks and other traffic. Can you just give a little bit more about how you're going to like try to control people's speeds in the complex?
I'll turn that over to Mr. Overton. I, I know that we do have the crosswalks, Mark, but Darren, would you want to just review that? I know there's a pavement texturing, but I'll let you address that.
So because of the kind of alignment of the roadways, we don't expect that there's going to be high speeds through this area. But the crosswalks that we added, I think it was part of the architectural review. We plan to have those as stamped asphalt. They're not going to be raised, but they will be a stamped textured and colorized type of crosswalk that'll provide more recognition for that, create more safety for pedestrians.
We found that the stamped concrete is more visible in all weather than just paint. And as you, as you drive over, you get this little, little rumble. So it, it helps, it helps to slow people down.
And, and will you also have like posted speed limit markers or?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One second, Karen. Ken?
Yeah, I just had, I wanted to just thank everybody, you know, attorney and the team for, for addressing our comments. The one thing I did forget last week, I was just, it was more of a curiosity was the, the main entrance driveway was, was the separation, the catch basin separation and gutter flow calculated for all that going down that steep slope. I just, um, my concern with, is that with the bypass of stormwater, that nothing's going to be going into Route 85 at that intersection. And so that, that's kind of my, just wanted to see if it was analyzed and if that's something that you could go over quickly.
Yes. So we do as part of our stormwater calculations, not only analyze the pipe sizing, but we also look at gutter flow, recognizing that there is some bypass and we also look at the inlet capacity of each of the grates so that we can understand certainly in low points, if we have an unacceptable level of ponding, that we can add more inlet capacity. And, and again, this project has been submitted on a preliminary basis up to OSTA as part of the, an initial review for the OSTA certificate for the project. So DOT drainage will be looking at this as part of the OSTA certificate and then also as part of the DOT encroachment permit. They won't do a full review until we had, can submit proof of a planning and zoning approval. But recognizing that hopefully we're moving towards that soon. We could submit that and start the full review process with them. So we believe we've addressed the gutter flow. We have proper inlet capacity, so there will not be excess water flowing out on the Hartford Turnpike. But I can assure you that DOT drainage will also do a thorough review to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? I just have a curiosity question. For the, what do you see from up here? You're probably high. How far can you see from these? What's the, the view? Anybody? No?
I, I understand from Marine Fitzgerald, you can see Long Island Sound.
Nice.
Very good. I, I, that's, that's why we named it Waterford Heights. Because it, it really should be, we, we don't know what it'll be like on the upper stories, but even at ground level, you're going to look at over the sound and it's just going to be spectacular.
Fantastic. Great. So Abby, do we have anything from you or Mark?
Yep. So, so Mark has prepared a staff report and just a series of findings and conditions based on the plans that have been amended and, and I'll let him take you through that briefly.
Sure. Thank you. Um, right. Well, I had, I had provided the commission with the staff report like I do for every other project that comes in with, with a series of findings here and conditions as well. I, I submitted a copy of the staff report to the applicant's team for their, for their review. I got a positive feedback from them with, as you notice on the, on the staff report that you received, there were two additional or I highlighted of these one additional finding and one condition of approval. I'd like to get that out here right now in, in the record that the applicants opted to be bound by the zoning regulations as amended after the date of application. And that is a, that is a finding. And one of the conditions of approval that was added is that the dimensions of the monument entrance sign shall conform to the zoning regulations as determined by the zoning enforcement officer prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance.
Mark, it, Mark, excuse me, one second. Karen and Ken, this was an email sent out this afternoon. If you didn't get it, has the added finding and find an added condition if you're looking for it.
I did, I did get it.
Okay.
I did. I, I know this may be a silly question.
Mark, I don't think Mark's done, right?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Trying to make sure you guys were following it because it's in the, those two things are only in the email today.
Right. And, and there's also a draft, a draft motion on this staff report as well. So certainly if members of the commission have any questions on this, feel free.
Just, just the one question. I'm not sure. Honestly, I don't remember when it changed or where it changed, but the parking calculation, which specific parking calculation? I know it amended. So the, I think the studio was less, less parking spaces?
Correct, correct. The, when, after this application had been, had been submitted, there were amendments made to the parking requirements. One of the things that was, that was changed is that there is now a distinction between studio and one-bedroom apartments with separate, separate calculations for each, whereas prior to that, they were all lumped in as one.
Do you, do you have that specific point? Just, I just need to look it up just for my own identification.
Yeah, the studio apartments are one space per unit. The one bedrooms are one and a half per unit. Two rooms. And three bedrooms, I believe, are both calculated as two per unit.
And that's in section 20, right?
That's correct. No, no. Yes, yes, it is. I'm, I'm sorry. That is correct. Section 20.
Because it says efficient, the, the reason I ask is because maybe I don't have the most current regulation because it says efficiency, efficient, efficiency unit versus studio. Does that make a difference?
No, as a matter of fact, I checked with our building officials as well to see if there's any difference between the two. They consider them both the same.
So is the new regulation has studio there versus efficiency?
The new regulation, studio and efficiency are the same.
Okay. All right. That's all. Okay. That's all I needed to know. I just was, I thought, I didn't know if I was missing something or, or what the, what the deal was. So, but thank you.
Yeah.
Mark, are you all set?
Yes.
Abby, do you have anything?
Nope. No, I think Mark's, uh, conditions and findings cover any of the amendments that were made and, and the recommendations that staff has for the project.
Okay. For the advocate, I just have a question, Mr. Attorney Brands. Are you, have any objection to any of the conditions?
Oh, we do not. We reviewed the, the draft in, the, the draft, if findings and draft and the, the two additional items were in response, were comments that I had made to Mr. Boydavitz. So we are, we consent to that as drafted.
Okay. Karen and Ken, is there any motion to be made?
I, I'll make the motion. Do I need to read in all the findings as well or just?
No, there's a draft, there's a draft motion at the end of the email, which incorporates the findings and the conditions, if you want to just make it that way.
Okay, no, that's fine. So I, I'll make a motion to approve with modifications and conditions. The Waterford multifamily residential development apartment community site plan application permit PL-21-16 for 969 Hartford Turnpike with conditions one through six and adopt the findings one through nine on the staff report.
And I, and I would just probably add the staff report dated today, March 22nd, right, as amended?
Yes, as amended, dated March 22nd, 2022.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the, the motion?
I, I'd just like to add that I think this is going to be a nice project.
Yeah, I think it's a great project. I'm very happy to see it. Very happy to have it approved and looking forward to having it in the town.
I would agree.
Are we ready? Any other discussion? Are you ready for a vote? Okay. All, all in favor? Actually, was, was there a second to the motion?
I seconded.
Goodbye Karen. All in favor of Ken's motion to approve PL-21-16 and adopt the findings and the conditions? In favor?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
I agree to nothing. Approval. Good luck with handle. Thank you, Attorney Brands and your team.
Thank you very much. We, it's, it's going to be a great project. I, I'm excited about it myself. But thank you very much to the commission and the staff.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, next one. Item number seven. Do we have any correspondence?
We do. We receive, the commission received a letter from Attorney Mark Keppel in regards to language in section 319 of the Waterford zoning regulations regarding temporary forms of outdoor entertainment.
Okay. Any other correspondence?
None that I've. No, no, no.
Item number eight. Do we have anything that's new on either of those items?
Just a, a quick thing. The farmer, if anybody was watching the channel last night, it sounds like the farmer's cow was on it, talking about expansion plans and mentioned Waterford. So the, the initial preliminary meeting that you had with them, it looks like is, they're, they're still, they're still working on their designs, but they are proceeding to hopefully come forward for a location in Waterford. Um, and I'm sure as folks have driven around, you'll see that the Willetts Avenue's apartments are, are under construction and then there's lots of work going on under there. We've also received the building permit for the Mago Point Cafe, the one that is next to the larger of the two office buildings. So, so that's moving forward. Um, some upcoming elements that you'll, to be looking forward to. Application will likely be in soon for a regulation amendment to enable additional housing on Great Neck Road. This is something that came in in, in a preliminary discussion a very long time ago. It was a pre-pandemic or in the early stages of the pandemic. Yep. So, so that will be, will be coming forward and additional design work is underway for potential industrial property at 21 Gurley Road that will be applying, we believe, to Wetland soon and the Planning and Zoning Commission shortly thereafter. And then other just general project news. The Town Center project relative to the, the improvements with the paths in the pond are beginning the design phase and we're expecting a, a new group of folks to be appointed by the Board of Selectment to help manage that project. The reiteration of the ad hoc committee that came up with the original master plan. One thing you may see in the next, today, you may have seen and tomorrow you may see additional and some of the sediment sampling in the pond is going on. And so some of that pre-work in order to design the dredging portion of that project is getting started, which is exciting. So. So those are the, the updates we've got so far.
Somebody questioned me this weekend about the old September's property. Is there anything being proposed about that? And I said, I, I don't know anything about it.
They've got some preliminary discussion, but.
Right, right. We have a very, a very preliminary plan in to repurpose a portion of that building for a landscaper. But that will be coming in once we go through the preliminary process. That'll be coming in as a formal application for cycling.
Yep. And some of that's being in response to, in response to some enforcement activities on the other side of the department. So, so there's a number of things that are moving with that.
Okay, great. Does that, does that take care of A and B?
Yep.
Okay. Item nine. Discussion of potential amendments to parking regulations. Has everybody reviewed this? It's really an amendment to 20.4C.
What it's, what it's intended to do is respond to some recent preliminary conversation that we've had with applicant teams when a particular use and parking generation is not listed already in our list of use in the regulations to enable the commission to accept other professional standards to, to determine what that parking demand on a property should be. So what we've tried to do here is, is say that if a use isn't specifically listed and there's nothing similar that you can reference in our regulations, then the applicant team can submit to the commission data from the most recent edition of the ITE Institution of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. And it gives a couple of findings, just because this is where we're adding a standard that is different than others in the regulation. So we want, we want to get the commission some cover to make particular findings about when that's appropriate. So basically the commission would need to find that there's no other similar use listed in the regulation already. And that the use or something similar is listed in ITE parking generation that is appropriate for the site. And, and that the commission accepts that as the basis of determining the number of required parking spaces. It's one more tool that the development community can use to provide you with up-to-date information on, on parking demand for, for sites across town.
So for, for the sake of transparency, this was something that I brought to the staff because of a conversation with a local engineer. I've been reaching out to engineers, surveyors, attorneys to see how, what we can do to make things easier for, for their clients to develop with talent. Some of the rules are outdated or that they don't really make sense for a particular purpose. So this is where this came from. I think it's a good one. I, I, I do have a concern with, that we have to find that the use doesn't have similar characteristics. I think it started out with, if it's not specifically listed, then they can go to the ITE. Because it's very, it's going to be very difficult. A lot of things are going to have similar characteristics, but so are they really going to be able to take advantage of, of the ITE if you know, they have similar characteristics?
The, the only reason that we added that in was, was upon review of when we get into very, very specific uses, especially under retail. If there's like specialty retail of certain types of, of commodities, they may in reality experience, and we've heard some feedback from some folks who are looking at other properties in town, that the use itself isn't identified separately even in ITE, but that similar uses that operate very closely to what they do in terms of specialty services are closer to what they are either currently experiencing or, or are intending to provide, would need relative to the services of a particular new site. So it was, that was just language that we put in to attempt to be a little bit more flexible for folks and to give the commission the ability to find that their argument that this other, this other particular use is actually closer than perhaps the category in which we would define it. So, so it's just, it does not have to be there. It was, again, it was an opportunity to be a little more flexible.
Yeah. Hey, I'm sorry, Ken. Go ahead.
No, no, I was going to say, I've used this in the past and it's actually a very good tool for the engineers, for them to be able to come up with different, either parking and or, you know, when you're doing your traffic studies and things of that sort. Because, I mean, the list, I mean, I know our list is pretty, pretty broad. We have a lot of things on there for the different uses, but this will definitely be a good tool for the engineers and different people doing site plans to come up with something. Because a lot of times, you know, they're taking two and three things and trying to meld them together and it, it just still doesn't work. And sometimes they're a little bit more, the, the ITE is a better, better resource than, like you said, we, these, some of these are outdated.
So I, I, I don't want to interrupt you. Karen, do you have something before I say something?
I, I guess the only thing I would ask is, just broadly speaking, is there like an example of something that's not on our list that has come up? I I guess the only thing I would ask is, just broadly speaking, is there like an example of something that's not on our list that has come up? I'm just curious what we have.
Self-storage, self-storage facilities and like I said, specialty retail. So if somebody is, you know, sort of sells a certain category of good. Um, we have a retail category that that requires expansive parking as though you had more of a department store. Or or that convenience kind of um, of of application. But in reality, the the retailer may only sell one particular product and folks are only coming there for that thing. Which really drives down, folks aren't going to do their general shopping or 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 pick things up. And so the the reality of their generation is is much lower than our regulations currently provide for.
Thank you.
So I I I would, I mean, I'd like to see the words and for which a use of similar characteristics is not included herein. Taken back out, because that wasn't in the initial proposal, right? Because that 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 makes us have a double finding, sort of, and it makes it a little more difficult to. We'd have to find that that was also part of it. I want to try to make it as flexible as we can for for people to to take advantage of it. So the, you know, the, right after the the comma, the first comma there.
Right, so agreed for uses not specifically listed in this section, the applicant may provide and the commission may accept and continue on from there.
Right, the applicant may provide, I mean. I mean, that's. I think that similar characteristics seems going to be a problem. I I, it's my opinion. So we just have to decide what to do with this. Along with the um, the next one, right?
Right, what would staff, what we what we need in terms of next steps is. If the commission, um, you know, wants to direct us to put together. Sort of the formal paperwork application file on this and actually advertise for a public hearing. We can do that. And the way that that would work is we would finalize the language, we'd get all of the elements together, um, posted online. And um, bring it back to the commission for formal sort of receipt, so that the world knows that this is officially starting. Um, as a, something that they can comment on and that is being considered for actual adoption at this point. And then, you know, whenever it comes in for that sort of receipt date, you would set the public hearing date. So that everybody would have a chance to comment on it um, before before adoption. So on this one, and as well as the outdoor dining, we just need to know what the final version of the language is. That the commission would like us to post and publish as part of that file that gets advertised for receipt and then the public hearing advertisement.
I I I guess we gotta decide on this this issue of the similar characteristics too. I mean, I, the one and two really, well, it wasn't in our initial draft of it either. And and you know, the other towns that have something similar to this don't have that, that, you have to find these other issues. They just say, if it's not listed, you can or you may. Uh, provide the institution of trans, Institute of Transportation Engineers data, which, that's all I really want. It's just, give another option, you know, another tool in the toolbox to to. Make it easier.
So are you saying make it a simpler, just? Just, yeah.
My my name is, for use is not specifically listed in this section, the applicant may provide and the commission may accept. You don't have to. Data from the most recent edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. Period. That's my, that's my most important thing is right there. And they can bring it in, they can make their pitch. If we accept the pitch, we can allow it. If we don't accept the pitch, because we feel like it's it's it's. It doesn't, uh, it doesn't apply. We don't have to. It gives us flexibility, gives the applicant a, you know, a big um, help. Uh, and we don't have to make findings that are that are vague, sufficiently similar, uh, similar characteristics. I mean. We can always probably make an argument either way on those, but why make them at all? Let's just make it very simple. But the period right after parking generation manual, and and people know exactly what they have to deal with, what they have to do. It's the whole point of the regulation change is to make it, you know, easier and simpler and and to catch up with the times.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think if the findings were to be removed, the only thing that we would recommend as staff in the actual staff reports. As they come forward, is that the commission makes specific findings relative to whether or not um, it's been accepted for under that May. Just so that there is an affirmative decision about what standard the commission is going for in each application, which I think is especially important. If it's a site plan application and it's a use by right. Um, and and we're going to vary what would otherwise be standards shown in in the in the regulations. That we just want to make sure that there, there is a finding on record. Um, so that can be deferred to the time of when an application comes in. Just know that we'll be recommending that finding in the future.
So what do you guys think?
Well. I I mean, I'm kind of, I'm I'm more of a kiss principle kind of person. I mean, I don't know why we're rewording everything. I think if you just added. You know, if it's not specifically listed, you can use the ITE. I mean, I I don't know, I just, I mean, I guess it says it there, but I I I'm kind of a little bit with you on that. I don't want to make our job that much harder and have to, you know. Find findings for, I mean, I I kind of agree with you that that makes it a little bit more challenging on our, on our part.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of making it a little bit more expensive and simple. I don't have a problem with, excuse me, I don't have a problem with getting rid of the one and two and the strikeouts that you had suggested.
Okay, so is if if that's sufficient, then we can, we can have you guys have you to put that together. So that we can get a package of these regulation changes and make a public hearing for all of them?
Yep, so so what we have now is the language for the parking, for uses not specifically listed in the section, the applicant may provide. And the commission may accept data from the most recent edition of the Institute of Transportation, Transportation Engineers IT Parking Generation Manual. And then we'll take out subject to the file following findings. So we end this. Yep, so that, yeah, that we can prepare for for adoption, absolutely.
Okay. The next one would be the accessory, outdoor dining.
This one, um, we hadn't made any changes uh, from the last meeting, because I think there was some conversation. In the bulk of the conversation was really around um, nine in in the second page was the um. Type of music. To be, to be played and and again, sort of, how much is permissible in terms of a sort of. Accompanying musical entertainment with outdoor dining versus what may actually be a temporary. Outdoor events, um, and trying to sort of draw a line there in light of of various um, uses around town. That we saw sort of during the pandemic, but also making sure that it's clear for the zoning enforcement officer. Um, you know, what is and what isn't allowed in concert with, no pun intended, but together with accessory outdoor dining. So does dining just mean dining? And and we basically said that you say that no matter what happens there, that the dining is the permitted accessory activity. And that we're not addressing music at all, or that. Me, uh, music may be permitted, provided it does not violate any applicable noise ordinance. That may cause some difficulty in zoning enforcement, since we don't enforce the noise ordinance. So the one alternative is to take out the the provision for music specifically entirely from this, from this section. And not not reference it and and have a different path that folks could use to to have musical events. Um, if they also have outdoor dining. So, so again, there's that, I think that was sort of the the one remaining issue. That seemed to be of most just consideration or need for discussion with with the group before we.
This is, this is gonna show my uh, my ignorance in the music field, but acoustic music is live music, right?
It can be, yeah, I mean, it would be. It just means non-amplified. Um, one could make an argument that a trumpet or tuba would be, you know, acoustic brass, right? If they're not amplifying. So, so certainly, um, even this language doesn't necessarily get to the heart of, you know, no. The outdoor dining is in and of itself, as as an accessory use, does not give permission to sort of hold concerts. And other events in association with the dining itself, that dining and those other activities are separate activities. Um, and I think that's just, that's something that the commission needs to to discuss and set a standard on.
I, I, okay, go ahead. Anybody have any issues?
I'm in a favor just getting rid of anything to do with the music and leave it just dining. I mean, give them the option, I mean. I don't know, I just, sometimes we get into the weed, I guess the regulations get into the weeds, maybe they have to be, I guess, but. I don't know, I I guess I don't care either way, but if I if I had to make a choice, I would say just get rid of anything to do with the, the music altogether. And just leave it dining specific, that that matches the the title of the, you know. I don't know, that's my thought, but I could be persuaded either way.
Yeah, and we can take out uh, nine.
Let me try to persuade you. See, I've been, I'm in Florida right now at this meeting and I've been to dinner outside the last three nights. And they all had music and it was fantastic. Wasn't a concert, some of it was loud, some of it was in a commercial area, some of it wasn't. But the place was jammed, because that's what people want. You know, I, as long as they don't bother the noise ordinance or or offend the noise ordinance. You know, that, to my opinion, that's up to the RTM to come up with a noise ordinance. And it's up for the police to enforce the noise ordinance. It's up for us to say, can you have music? It's not necessarily up for us to police the noise ordinance, though that's RTM to make the ordinance, police to enforce it. If it becomes a persistent problem, then there might be a zoning violation. But we're not, we're not gonna have Jill out there with a noise meter. Uh, checking the 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 noise, you know, the the police enforce the the noise ordinance with the motorcycles and the loud music and the cars. And the, and the wild parties at houses and things like that. It's not our job. Our job is to say, what do we want to see in town and what do we want our restaurants to be able to do? We want it to be able to have a nice evening outside with pre-recorded or acoustic music or not, subject to the noise ordinance. I do. I think it's a great thing to have. For the town.
I mean, go ahead, Karen.
Um, I was just gonna, have we had any issues with people pushing the limits on this noise business?
We have, there's a subject of enforcement relative to one location that had outdoor dining. And sort of exceeded some of the the parameters and there's a whole separate enforcement issue happening there. Um, and I, you know, again, I think it's it's sort of a. Kind, I think what Greg, is sort of what Greg was getting to is this sort of, is is any level of of entertainment in association with the outdoor dining. Acceptable as part of the outdoor dining use? And at what point do we see it as something different? That it's it's really an event, not an ongoing component of the entertainment that happens in association with the outdoor dining piece.
So, I mean, I guess where I come down on this is if they're advertising the band and not the restaurant. Then that seemed to be like it's not music accompanying dinner, it's, there's a band playing. I mean, I'm I'm kind of in favor of the, the music or acoustic acoustic music. I mean, I feel like we have stuff in the books already about if you want to have a special band at your place, you gotta get the special event permit, right? I I mean, I like the idea of mu- in music at a restaurant, so if we can allow it, I'd be in favor of it.
I had a guy yesterday, he rode a table to table with a guitar singing outside. It was great. He came over to the table. You have a request, she wanted lazy, uh, I forgot, it's an Italian song, Lazy Somebody. And and a guy strummed on the guitar and sang it and it was, it was, it was, it was great. You know, I want that stuff for the town. That that's why I'm in favor.
I guess I'm, I hear what you're saying and and again, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I mean, I go, you know, you go to Old Saybrook, you go to Fresh Soul. You go to these different restaurants, you know, Westport, you know, the big, you know, the the fine dining restaurants or whatever, and they have bands playing there. And and I don't have a problem with it. I I mean, but they're kind of in an enclosed, they're behind the the buildings. I mean, so the noise is out by the water, you know, it's, it's kind of a different, so I, I don't have a problem with something like that. Again, when people are starting, I I guess the outdoor dining thing would tend to start popping up and all this stuff starts popping up on in the, in the parking lot. I I don't know, I just, I think you've changed the the use of what you were doing, you know, you you. You know, initially, it was just an indoor dining. Now you've kind of expanded the use and I I know that's not what this does, but. I I'm just, is there, is there really a need to even have it in there? Is it, is it, do we have to be explicit when we do this? Or can it, can it be, I mean, what? I mean, is there a noise ordinance now?
There is. It's it's under review by the RTM. It's in committee now um, for discussion and and working through with the town attorneys. Um, and and that RTM committee, there has been some discussion about the current enforceability of that ordinance. And I think that's what what Greg was looking to, was it was the RTM is taking that up now to perhaps amend it. Um, in order to address some of the issues that perhaps have have come up, not just with this particular issue, but but noise in general throughout town. And the ability to um, to enforce when when somebody has a complaint. Um, so that's, that's one thing. You know, I think the um, the way that our regulations work is that if it's not a use that's listed. Then it's 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 not specifically allowed. And so I think there's an element there to consider here. Is that if you want to specifically enable providing the zoning officer with with very specific. And then for the commission too, for those things that may amend the actual site characteristics that would be coming forward for your approval. It lays it out that, you know, this is, this is what's allowed by right folks, um, you know, in in association here versus leaving it ambiguous. Um, so it's it's up to the commission, um.
So explain this to me then, like, I'm at a wedding at Harkness, we're eating outside, they have a band there. What's the difference between that and a restaurant and what what, why was that regulated for the band to be able to play there? I mean.
Little different because it's state property and so they have a little bit of different um, sort of parameters for for the use of state property. Um, in terms of their need to to comply with zoning. If we recall with our conversation accessory outdoor dining, this is a a modification in statute. Where um, by right accessory outdoor dining is something that is is the next iteration of what towns are being. Um, you know, sort of forced to address as as an accessory use by right. And so this is something, if you if you're already a permitted restaurant or cafe, a commercial entity, not necessarily on state property, but but one of the commercials. Um, these are things that that we do have to address and and technically after April first, um, that use is enabled through the legislation. And so this, so this is really the iteration of of the, it's it's the state's solution to post pandemic. Um, enabling a flexibility with with these spaces.
Yeah, one of the issues too with with uh, providing music at, you know, some of these restaurants outdoors. Um, you know, has to do with the impact in on neighbors in the neighborhood as well. Um, you know, for something at Harkness, uh, if it's an event, there's really no impact. But but when you're looking at, um, you know, more densely populated areas. Um, you know, with that, one of the considerations is also a impact outside of the boundaries of the property. And you know, how the uh, neighborhood is affected as well.
So so the way the language currently reads in in nine here under the pre-recorded music pieces, basically what would happen is, it's allowed. If you're, if you're pre-recorded, if you're acoustic, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna say anything about it other than say, yes, you're allowed to have it. It's certainly something that if you do it, um, you don't necessarily need separate permission for it. But if you violate the noise ordinance, you're in violation of your zoning compliance permit by virtue of having violated that. Um, if you want to have amplified music, right now, this language doesn't cover amplified music. It specifically says if you're doing performances or activities beyond pre-recorded or or acoustic. Then you've got to get into special permissions for that activity. And so what we want to make sure we do is just resolve what language the commission wants us to carry forward to the to the file. To to put out for public review.
So, I mean, I know just from around town, the places that were doing it, you know, last summer. They had their bands, but they had microphones and they had amplifiers in in their, you know, in the area. So that wouldn't be allowed. I mean, then, so now you have a guy going around policing everything. I, I don't know, I mean, I. I guess I'm just, I, I don't want to go get too, I have no problem with, with, with the wording and what you're saying and what Greg's saying, what Karen's saying. I don't know, I just, it seems like we're being, uh, like a, a nanny state and it says we're, we're regulating every little jot and tittle of things, but. I guess if we have to, we have to. I, I don't know, it just seems like we're.
So our, our obligation is to have something on the books relative to accessory outdoor dining. That's our statutory obligation. And the, the question for the commission is, do you want to address music specifically? Or do you want to cut all of this language out and say, um, you know, nine says. Any activity associated with accessory outdoor dining shall, shall conform with the noise ordinance. You could do that as well. Um, the reason that we've put the specificity in and it's, it's the reason that many. Many regulations get, get put in is because we had conflicts surrounding the issue and, and, you know, that was, that's really the. The effort to provide particularly enforcement cases if they come up. Language that, that our zoning official can rely on, but there's, there's no requirement by statute to, to have. This level of specificity relative to the type of performance. Um, so you could say that any activity, you know, accessory, accessory outdoor dining. And any associated activity to take place in conjunction shall, you know, um, conform to the noise ordinance and leave it up to the zoning officials to decide whether it's. Really, you know, sort of accessory to the accessory and, and it's, they're just piping music out or having a guitar player wandering versus they are having. An event at which they're advertising specific bands at specific times that are different from perhaps their, their normal operating hours. So, you know, we have accessory outdoor dining, you know, from five to nine, but we're having a band from six to eight. That, that might be seen to be a separate event, so.
I don't know, I like your, your, your idea of leaving it a little bit more. Open, but, and not so specific. I, I, I kind of like what you just, what you said just now, Abby, but that's my, my thinking.
Wait, so I'm a little, so Kenny, what, what are you saying?
I just don't want to be so specific that we get, I mean, I, I, I mean, I. I don't know, I, I think we'd leave it up to it, as long as you're not affecting the noise ordinance that's coming, then you're good. Instead of getting into acoustic and pre-recorded and.
I, I, I agree. I, I, I think, I don't care what you do. If you don't.
That's what I.
No, I'm saying if you don't violate the noise ordinance, if it's karaoke, I mean, nobody wants to hear me sing. But if I'm not avoiding, if I'm not bothering the noise ordinance, who cares if it's karaoke or a guitar player or. A live singer, you know, I, I, I guess I am concerned about the acoustic part too, because. It means you can't have a singer with a, with a speaker.
That's the way that this would be interpreted, the way it's, it's currently.
Yeah, I guess I don't like that either then, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess more general music, as long as you don't violate the.
The noise ordinance.
And, and the issue, I mean, the issue will really come down to whether or not the noise ordinance and the levels that are, are sort of probably at the state level. Relative to how noise is regulated in the municipal realm, which there is state oversight of some and DEP oversight of some of those things. Whether or not the noise ordinance in effect. Provides the protection and I think it's really where the residential and commercial neighborhoods butt up, that's usually, it's always where the conflict is going to be. Um, and, and the question will be, can the RTM get to a place in which? That impact between commercial and residential is, is mitigated.
Well, I mean, example for me, I mean, I live, you know, right up the road of Mago Point. And every Friday, Saturday and Sunday of the summer, I get to dance for free. I don't have to go to the, I don't have to, you know, pay the entrance fee for the, you know, the. The establishments down near Mago Point. So, I mean, I hear it. I, I hear it all the time. I mean, I don't care, it doesn't bother me. I mean, it's not a big deal, but. Those are amplified, those are bands, they're, they're, it's, but I, I'm just saying, as long as it meets the noise ordinance. You know, I, I think we, I, I don't know, I think we leave it a little bit more open and, and if the police have to get involved, I mean, they're the ones who are enforcing it, the zoning, whoever. That, that's going to be on them to make that decision. I, I just, I don't want to get into the nuance of. You know, what instrument, whether it's a trumpet or an acoustic.
I, I agree. And I understand one thing too, Ken, it's still 10 o'clock. That's it.
Yeah.
You know, so I, that, that's the limitation on it, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm good with taking out pre-recorded music or acoustic or acoustic. And just starting it with music maybe permitted. I don't know, that seems to be what you're saying. What about Karen?
Yeah, I'm fine with simplifying it down to compliance with the noise ordinance. That's fine.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll strike pre-recorded music or acoustic, right?
And then you can get that. Capital M music and then leave the rest of that statement.
Package that up for us with the off-street parking regulations.
Yep.
Right, and we are. Going to get a motion to adjourn just within one hour, which is perfect.
Can I just mention one, one quick thing? Um, and I, just so I don't forget it, I'm sorry. Um, in, in, in the upcoming, and I know I, Mark and Abby and, and Greg, we've had a lot of conversations regarding. Engineering review of drainage. And I just want to make sure, like, the process of making sure that, like, even the, the upcoming, um. One we're going to be reviewing, Waterford. I don't know, Waterford, I don't know what, what, what development is, the multifamily one on Willets. Um, I just, I really feel that. A professional engineer or a consultant needs to review the drainage to make sure. Everything is on up and up and that they kind of sign off on it. I just, anything with detention or anything like that, I think really should be reviewed by. You know, the, the town's engineer.
Yep, so, so the commission can specify on receipt, we've talked about getting materials out to the commission. At the time of receipt so that you can see the complexity of, of what is going on. The commission can specify as part of the review of an application that a third-party review is required. And then the applicant is required to pay for those third-party expenses. So, so we can certainly do that at the time of the receipt, but we would need to be directed by the commission that you found that that's necessary for the application.
So, Kenny, Abby, we talked about putting, listing it on the agenda, right? So the public knows what's coming in, we know what's coming in. If we could get a quick summary from you guys about, this is a hundred unit. Complex being proposed on three and a half acres. Uh, there's some topography issues, there's, this issue might come up. So then we can make a decision as to, yes, let's send it right off before they get too far down the road and then we have to work back. So if we can add that to it as well, just a quick summary, right? Can, can I just, just enough, you know, whether, you know, if it's a 10-unit, uh, you know, apartment complex, maybe not. But if it's 140 units and it's got some drainage issues or, or topography issues, maybe we want to have it looked at. Is that, is that right?
My, my only concern is when it has to do with detention and any kind of, you know, I know Maureen does the quality stuff, but quantity, I think. Reviewing the detention in detail and making sure that the stormwater is in compliance with our section 25. And that, you know, just dotting out, I mean, because, you know, we're. We're not all engineers on the commission, so it's just having that person firm, whoever it is. You know, saying, yep, here, or this needs to be fixed or whatever and looked at, I think is important.
Yep, and so I think what we will do is, is certainly, um, when folks come in for preliminary, we'll flag things at that point for folks if they are coming before the commission for preliminary discussion. We'll also do that during the, the night of receipt so that it's, it's sort of clear the commission can give us direction. Typically how that is run in the past, um, we, the town has, has, for the last several years, has been maintaining on-call engineers. And so we could potentially go in that direction, so we don't have to go out and bid and get two quotes every single time the commission wants to do this, because. With the 65-day timeline, especially for site plans that can extend that horizon of review and add to some of the complexities. We want to make sure that if we're going to do it, we're doing it in as streamlined fashion as possible. So we'll, we'll, at the next meeting, we'll lay out kind of what that program looks like and how it will practically work going forward, absolutely.
We, 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 I think we may want to bid that, but not on an individual basis.
So the, the on-call services that the town maintains are bid through our purchasing department and finance. And so we have typically, usually two, we may, and we have the ability to have more, we have on-call firms. That we can say, okay, this is the application we need, you know, we need you to review and here's the deadline for review. They'll give us a quote, the applicant will cut us a check and then, and then they can get going.
So can we do that for Waterford Woods or no?
We did not do that.
Didn't do it for it, no.
No, we did it for the airport. When the airport came in, there was a third party.
But can we do it for Waterford Woods now is what I'm asking.
For the next iteration, we could.
For the next one, when, when an application comes in, we could.
I mean, the current one that we have in our package right now, we can't now.
It's.
For phase two.
That one has already been received, um.
It's, it's a little bit hard mid, mid-application. It's not that the commission couldn't, but mid-application, I think, Mark, I need to know what the timeframes are on that application and when our deadline is. Because to get someone to receive that information, to start their review now, the question is, do we have the timeframe? Um, and that's a little bit of a change in course for the applicant mid-application. And so, um, you know, we can certainly take a look at that timeframe and see if it's, if it's possible. I do think the applicant would probably have something to say about that, but I think if it's set at the time of receipt, I think it's a little bit easier for the commission to have affirmatively said. To review this, we need the following. If there are particular concerns with this application that you think are not, that, that need particular review, it would be good to know that. So that we can, you know, can address that as well, but, yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand. I guess it's just one of those things, like, you know, I don't want to get caught up and if we don't get a quorum, if we don't have this, how do we, you know, it should almost. There should be certain criteria that trip that no matter what, like the one, the, uh, the, the ice cream place in the, you know, by Stop and Shop. That, that drainage is not a real big deal, but anything with some sort of detention or storage or. You know, any kind of water quality or anything like that really needs, you know, a third-party review, but. That's all, I, I just, I feel strongly about it. I, I just, I, I. You know, not having it, it's just, it's, it's leaving, leaving us in the town open for, you know, things to happen down there. I've seen it, seen it in Stonington, I've seen towns get sued because, you know, engineers, you know, didn't do the due diligence, didn't do the, you know, reporting correctly. And, you know, we're signing off on that. So by, by giving it, you know, an affirm, affirmative, you know, approval. We're signing off on that, so I want to make sure that, you know, things are done correctly and safely, especially, I mean, especially with stormwater, I mean. Something, any, uh, detention base blows out in, in an area, I mean, you could have a real, I mean, it happened in Motville. You with the, uh, with the Home Depot, where, uh, I forget the name of the road behind it, but then, you know, everything was designed. But the whole, you know, the wall and everything in the detention basin blew out the entire and ended up in the, in a neighborhood, so.
What, what would be useful, I think, is to sort of say, what is the threshold? If there's a general threshold at which. The commission agrees that by policy, we're going to be, when staff is having free conversation with prospective applicants, that we can say, hey, listen, the commission's policy is you're doing something. Of this magnitude, you should be preparing that on receipt, we're going to ask for third-party review. It would be useful for us, then if there's gray area, we can always set that during receipt, but at least we can give some warning to folks ahead of time. I think that would be helpful. We have the right to do it on any project, but like you said, some may warrant it, some may not. So, so I think if we can maybe put that on discussion for the next meeting about how we want to work through it.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we agree to have you? Put it on the agenda, give us a quick summary of it every time. And then Ken, can you come up with maybe a, a, a general guideline as to. When you think it should be necessary and up to your expertise, I think, on this?
Yeah, and that's fine. And I think, you know, two examples of that are the two projects we've just, the one we just approved and the one that's currently Waterford Woods and Waterford Heights are two of the ones. You know, projects like that really need to have, you know, somebody really. You know, I can only, you know, I, I have to work all day. I don't have time to sit down for eight hours and, and study all the drainage and go through the reports. I mean, I can only go at as, as best I can, um, but I just think, you know, we need somebody that can do that.
All right. I think Greg had a nice point that if we look at the topography, if we look at the number of units, maybe the acreage, like, those might be some really broad stroke, like. Okay, we need to look at this, like, do we need it or do we not? Like, that's easiest. Well, I'm happy to talk about it as subject of my meeting.
Yeah.
Let's delete now. Just tell me it's deleted, but.
So just, just for, for, for staff clarification, so we're bringing both the parking and the outdoor dining back to you. We discussed for a formal application process and getting that going for the next meeting for receipt. And then at that meeting, we'll set public hearing dates for those two issues. We'll package them together and then off we go.
Perfect, yes. Great. Any motion to adjourn? Nobody?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Karen. And, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Hey, have a good night, guys.
Thanks, everybody.